Welcome to the June 11th City Council meeting. We're going to have the flag salute and Adam is going to lead us. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance.
And we're going to start right out tonight with our presentation of the 2020 Census. Please, the U.S. Census Bureau Partnership Specialist Jim Graham, please. All right, thank you. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for having me. Thank you for letting me have the opportunity to speak to you and address the census with you tonight. We're going to talk tonight about the road to 2020 and particularly hard to count populations and what I perceive and see looking at the analysis of McMinnville's response rates and projected response rates according to one of the Census Bureau tools. I am Jim Graham. I'm a partnership specialist with the U.S. Census. In my role, I reach out to local community leaders and governments and seek to form partnerships by which we can achieve a complete and accurate census. The 2020 Census will shape America for the next 10 years. State representation is determined by census data. The apportionment issue is one of the primary reasons our founding fathers mandated a census be performed every 10 years. That rolls into voting districts at all levels of government and it's one of the reasons that we need incredibly fine and detailed data geographically speaking is because a voting district goes foot by foot. So it needs to be specific at the point that a person is a resident in a community to ensure that voting districts and all the way up are allocated properly. And that correlates into power. The census determines power in our democracy. It also determines money. Federal funding, $675 billion per year is allocated based on the census federally. It instructs transportation where roads, bridges, repair projects may happen, housing, where affordable housing will be subsidized or dedicated as well as housing assistance. Where do we need to build schools, hospitals, healthcare facilities of all kinds? And where do we need to implement special programs? The census outcome affects every person in America and therefore it must be accurate. This slide, it is in the Constitution. I talked about the forefathers. I like to point out that it's Article 1, Section 2. This was the second most important thing our forefathers recognized as they were drafting the Constitution and forming the framework of our democracy that persists to this day. Article 1, Section 2, apportion among the several states according to the numbers. That's what the census does. The challenge is to achieving an accurate census. We need to identify, reach, interview, and persuade respondents. And in regards to identification, reach, and interview of people to answer the census, challenges that we face with the Census Bureau and affect the count in McMinnville are the mobile population. People are moving around. They have less sense of place. With sense of place comes the sense of a civic duty to accurately respond to a census. We have increasing diversity. It makes diversity, gives incredible strength to our community, but it also tends to have segments of that diversity, diverse populations that are less likely to respond to the census because of perceived biases in the census that they feel that they are not being appropriately represented. We have complex living arrangements, shared custody of children, for example, that may go across voting precincts, perhaps even across representative districts. We also have three generations under a roof with the sandwich generation in the middle. These things make census counting more difficult and more complex. We also have the rapidly changing use of technology with the Internet, social media. I was interested to learn that millennials sometimes don't check their mail. And when we get to the map of McMinnville and we look at where you have incredibly low response rates, it's the college. And there are a couple of factors that tie into that, but the coincidence that young people don't check their mailbox is certainly one of them. Mobile phones, even an old person like me doesn't have a landline at home anymore. Probably the vast majority of people under 40 do not have landlines because mobile phones are so simple. And that's in the past, that's been one of the primary tools that the census has used to follow up and follow through with people who did not respond to the census. So these factors contribute to target demographics or communities for extra focus. We call them hard to count populations. If you think of these as fragile, at risk, unstable, these are all terms that are used in other social sciences and other thought chains of thought. They're really talking about the same populations that we are talking about hard to count. We have children under five and young families. There's an interesting coincidence that young families look at the critter in a crib and don't think that child is an actual person that needs to be counted. Well, it is. If that child has been born on April 1st of 2020, that child is a resident of McMinnville and we need to count that young child and all the way up through, that persists up through school age and into young adulthood. Non-English speakers, this gets to the interview question of how we can reach people and communicate with them if they don't speak the same language that our enumerators do. And I'll get to a few ways that our enumerators have to work through that. Senior citizens, senior citizens are actually more likely to respond to the census, but my assumption is that they're listed as hard to count because of access. It may be hard to find and hard to reach senior citizens because they're not out in the community as much. Immigrants, this, and together with homeless transient migrant workers, a lot, again, these are hard to reach populations, but there's also trust issues related to whether they are willing to answer a government employee asking them questions. People with disabilities, this is a mobility issue that, again, they're just not out in the community and so they become hard to reach. And veterans, this one was a surprise to me as a veteran myself, but I spoke to a veteran service officer in a county that was not Yem Hill and he told me, "Well, the government knows everything it needs to know about me. I haven't answered the census in years." I just can't believe that as a veteran myself, but clearly that thought process is out there. Finally, I mentioned that we need to persuade people. I've touched on some of these, but we have a more polarized society. We have distrust of government, especially at the federal level. Misinformation and disinformation is rampant and easier to come by than valid information in many, many instances. We have the citizenship question that's going to dissuade many of those immigrants, migrant workers, and folks like that from having the trust of government that they are already lacking. So we're looking at a double whammy trying to get the message across with the citizenship question looming large. Fear of retribution, I'm not going to go into the urban myths of the things that people think the census does, but a little bit later I will get into the fact of how safe the census data is and how tightly it is controlled inside the Census Bureau. Finally, we have other distractions that will be happening in 2020. We have presidential primaries. We have all of the standard sporting events and sporting championships going on. We have the Olympics to add to the sporting world. People are leading very distracted lives and all of this combines to make declining response rates. The message that we need to get across is the census is important, it's easy, it's safe. We asked 10 or 11 questions. These are those questions and you'll notice number 11 is the citizenship question. It's currently being considered by the Supreme Court for inclusion or exclusion from the 2020 Census. Our hope at Census Bureau is that there's a decision rendered on or before July 1st because that's, we have two sets of plates at the printer, one with 11 questions, one with 10. And if we don't have the answer by July 1st, we're going to be in a time crunch to get the print job actually accomplished because of all the paper jams. Data in the census is private and confidential. The data is reported in aggregate only. Individual census responses cannot be derived or divined from census data as it's provided to the public and as it's provided to public officials in most cases. One very slight deviation from that is the allocation data that we'll provide to Congress next year will be more granular and more accurate intentionally than some of the data that is available publicly, which has white noise or intentional mistakes introduced into it. So for example, a stalker can't realize that in this very, very small census tract, there's a 13-year-old girl that he may want to go and stalk. Well, we may take the 13-year-old girl out of that census tract, put her in one next door, so the creepy van is over there driving around and the 13-year-old girl has the opportunity to grow up and live a natural life. More importantly though, every census worker has taken an oath under Title 13 and Title 26. If I or any of my colleagues disclose any personal identifying information or business identifying information, we are subject to five years imprisonment and $250,000 fine. And this goes to the Census Bureau as well. Shortly after 9/11, Homeland Security attempted to pierce the veil of census data sanctity. It went to the Supreme Court and Homeland Security failed to pierce that veil. Census data sanctity was upheld by the Supreme Court. So there's a recent and strong precedent that census data is not going to be shared with any government agency except in the same aggregate data that every citizen can get online using census tools. My job as a partnership specialist is to get out into the community, educate people that the census is coming, to let you know what the operations are going to look like so when you see people in your neighborhood, you may offer them a drink of water rather than offering them a 911 call. Also, we want to encourage our partners to motivate their constituents to self-respond and our grassroots organizations. We want to partner with grassroots organizations again to engage with their constituents, specifically the hard to count populations, and get a better count, a better response to the national census. Language options on our, this is the first year we're offering Internet self-response as a census response option. We'll be offering it in 11 languages in addition, 12 languages in addition to English listed here. The paper form will be available and mailed or left at addresses in English and Spanish. Questionnaire help via telephone in the same 13 languages as the Internet self-response. Our enumerators will also have English and Spanish, but there are going to be employees in the Census Bureau with other languages. I've seen at least half of these Internet self-response languages recruited specifically for positions in communities and metropolitan areas with high immigrant or high English as a second language residents. And finally, we have a language card system, which is rather old-fashioned but very effective. What that is, if an enumerator, maybe we're going to put it on the tablet so it'll be high-tech. But if an enumerator comes up to a door in McMinnville and they don't recognize the language that that person is speaking, they have a deck of 59 different common words in various languages and they'll flip through the flashcards and look for the person to respond affirmatively that they recognize a language. And once we can identify a language that the person recognizes, we can find help, whether that's online or through our avenues of our translators that we have hidden in a molehill somewhere in probably Maryland. Response Outreach Area Mapper is a census tool. This is a publicly available tool on census.gov and it gives you really interesting information about the McMinnville or anywhere nationwide, how the response is anticipated to look. And when you drill down on any of these census tracts, you can find a lot of demographic data. Dark blue is bad. The green areas are not so good. The tan area is good. And so let's, you see that in McMinnville, the area down around the college is where the dark blue is. Let's look at some of the demographic factors that speak to that. So the Linfield College is the fourth column over from the left, third column over from the right. 27.5% non-response rate. That means that over 1 in 4 people in that census tract failed to respond to the census. You've got a fairly high median income at $45,000, but also alarmingly high 29% poverty rate. Sounds like students mixed in with professors and that's probably what it is. We also have a 30% Hispanic rate, which is a cause for concern from the perspective of the immigrant populations or English as a second language or simply distrust of government. And 14.4% English as a second language hardships in household members over age 5 is another indication that there are communication issues in that census tract that we are going to need to work around. Rent is 53.9%. That's pretty high, but again, it's what you would expect in the area surrounding and including a college campus because student housing is either going to be dormitories on campus, which are hard to count, or it's going to be apartments surrounding the campus, which are hard to count. Families under 6, 32%. This speaks to the critter in a crib not being counted perhaps, but it also speaks to families that are just very, very busy in their lives and may not have the time and impetus to answer this census that came to their mailbox. 10% vacant housing. I thought this was bad when I made the slides, but then I've seen Tillamook County has, most of the county is 60% or more vacant rate, so maybe 10.3 isn't so bad. Moved in the last year, this gets to what I was talking about, the sense of place and the tying to their location and to their community. 30% have moved in the last year and 20% are foreign-born. You can see others of these factors in other tracts in McMinnville, including all of the ones that are over 20% non-response rate, over 1 in 5. But that Linfield College tract is really the one that sticks out as something we want to work to make better. And the one that is, the one with 17.1% passing grade, that's a fairly affluent section out on the west end of town. So what are we doing now? We're gearing up for address canvassing. The office in Salem this week is hiring 1,200 or 1,300 people. They're going to hire, that's just the supervisors, they're going to hire the boots on the ground next week to do address canvassing coming up in August and September. Motivate, that's what I do as partnership and as you can see, I'm up here continuing. Self-response starts officially on April 1st, but there's going to be an early self-response opportunity by telephone and Internet effective on March 12th. Group quarters, that's where we count the kids in the dorms and as well as jails, prisons, and healthcare living facilities like assisted living and senior living communities. Non-response follow-up, 500,000 people will be hired next summer to do the non-response follow-up where they go door-to-door knocking on doors, "Can I ask you these 10 questions" of the people who did not respond to the census in April and May. We report the count to the President on January 1st and we report the apportionment numbers to Congress in March 2021. We're hiring. 1750 are the jobs that are available still. I have put some of these flyers on the tables in the back, 2020census.gov/jobs. There, you may still be able to get into the thousands of people that'll get hired next week if you go home and apply tonight, but as I said, the supervisors are already being hired and selected this week. But next summer, the same website will be hiring for those 500,000 nationwide jobs. Help this 2020 Census accurately count. I'm asking for your help to support an accurate 2020 Census. Make sure McMinnville gets all of its share of the $13.5 billion of that 675 federal that comes to Oregon. The way we can do that is to think strategically about how together we can improve the count among family, friends, neighbors, and especially those hard to count populations. Spread the word about the jobs that are available. We want the best people possible on the street doing the census operations and it's a difficult employment environment right now, so we can use all the help we can get. Urge everyone with which you're connected, please self-report. Try out the self-response online, see if it works. We're hoping it does. And if that doesn't work, the paper will be available on April 1st. And I'm here tonight to ask you to form a local complete count committee and/or approve a proclamation of support for the census, lend your expertise, and help to ensure that all segments of McMinnville are accurately counted in 2020. So my ask to you tonight is to approve the proclamation that I believe you have before you. And if you want to go further and form a complete count committee, I'm all in, we can make that happen. We're on all of the standard social media as well as slow media. And I am James Graham Partnership Specialist. My contact information. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, we don't have a proclamation with us tonight, but I just kind of wanted to take a quick read of the council. How do you feel about advising to go ahead and form a committee to help with the census? Adam, do you have any thoughts on that?
Is there any cost to the city for forming a committee? And how big, how many members would we need to put on that?
If we follow the Census Bureau guidelines, everybody and their brother would be on the committee and it would become large and unwieldy. My goal is to make it as simple as possible, as low cost as possible. There are many, many things that we could do at low or no cost to the city. Messaging, getting things out through city channels of communication. If there are utility bills, water bills, for example, that we could get a census flyer into, could be very low cost or it might be expensive depending on how the operation works on the city side. If we could get, if we can't get a stuffer in the envelope, if we could get a line on the bill itself just highlighting the importance of the census, it could be almost no cost to the city, but it could affect and impact a lot of people. So there are a lot of things that we could do at low or no cost. And some of the things that we might do at slight cost, for example, if we, well, I'm going to partner with Linfield College. I have not reached out to the extent that I should, that I will yet, but they're on summer break. So some of the things at Linfield College, for example, could get student government involved in convincing students to self-respond, getting students involved in being part of the solution and really motivated to go out and make their voice heard. It's something that I think we could convince students to buy into. So there are a lot of things that we can do at little or no cost without buying the television ads and all that kind of expensive advertising or high personnel resource costs that might be otherwise spoken for if we follow the guides.
I would be in support of low budget impact but high value return, like he mentioned with Water &amp; Light mailers, if that's a possibility. I don't know how that looks for Water &amp; Light.
We have used it in the past. I guess we'd have to go back and ask them if they would do that.
But I would be opposed to any high-dollar expenses put into it.
Okay, Sal?
Yeah, I feel about the same as Adam. I'm definitely in favor of a proclamation in addition to that.
Okay. Zach?
I too would back a proclamation and interest in value in the census and going through a list of importance of low value versus, or low dollar versus high dollar and kind of choosing what we do and based on that.
Okay, Remy?
Agreed.
And Wendy?
I also agree.
Okay, so I think we're in favor of forming a committee and doing a proclamation, so we'll kind of turn to staff and ask them to kind of help us put that together. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time and opportunity to speak with you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, our next presentation is the Oregon Accreditation Alliance. Chief Scales is going to introduce Ed Boyd, the Executive Director of the Oregon Accreditation Alliance. Ed will be giving the presentation.
Hey, thank you, Council President Minkin and staff. It's my pleasure to introduce Ed Boyd, who is the Executive Director of the Oregon Accreditation Alliance. Ed spent just under 27 years in law enforcement. He rose through the ranks at Salem PD to the rank of Deputy Chief and he was with Albany as their chief for seven and a half years, retiring in 2013. Since that time, he's been the, with the Oregon Accreditation Alliance. It's my pleasure for, to bring him in. We've been a partner for years. I don't think we've ever brought Ed or any of his constituents in to talk about it, but I think this is a high-value project that we're a part of and it's an alliance that we're committed to continuing to be a part of, to ensure that we're providing the best service to the city and the citizens. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ed.
Thank you, Chief.
Welcome, Ed.
Thank you very much. My name is Ed Boyd, as mentioned. I'm very privileged to be here tonight to present the McMinnville Police Department with their third consecutive award of state law enforcement accreditation. I want to thank Chief Scales for his invitation here tonight. I'm very pleased to be here. When we talk about accreditation, accreditation is all about standards. Our profession and our agencies are all about standards. We have standards to become a police officer, standards to graduate from the police academy, standards to be certified as an officer, and standards for the varying levels of certification that we hold through the Department of Public Safety Standards and Training. We continually preach and demand standards of accountability, standards of performance, and standards of conduct. Accreditation means that an agency, their operations, their management, their policies and procedures meet the best practices that the industry currently has to offer. The accreditation process in general is a progressive and contemporary way of helping law enforcement agencies evaluate and improve their overall performance and provides formal and professional recognition that an organization meets or exceeds best practice expectations of service and quality in the profession. To be an accredited agency, the agency must meet 102 professional standards comprised of over 400 separate requirements contained within those standards. In Oregon, right at 36% of all law enforcement agencies are currently involved in the accreditation program and just a little over 23% actually hold state accreditation. You're still talking a very small and select group that have taken this to the level of being accredited. There are currently 61 law enforcement and 911 agencies involved in the voluntary accreditation program and currently 49 accredited agencies in Oregon. It also, in my opinion, takes courage for an organization to take on the rigorous accreditation process to begin with. Anytime the chief executive officer of an organization invites an outside third party into their department to review and inspect everything associated with their operation and render an opinion as to whether they meet that set of best practice standards for that profession, I think that by itself shows commitment, transparency, and extreme dedication to excellence. The McMinnville Police Department joined the Oregon Accreditation Alliance in July of 2009, so coming up on 10 years now. As mentioned, this is the department's third consecutive award of accredited status. Once an agency receives accredited status, they are reevaluated and reassessed every three years. It is through the commitment and direction of chiefs, sheriffs, and 911 directors that their agencies undertake this process to begin with. And also although it is very, it is truly an agency-wide effort to make it happen, special recognition needs to be given to the accreditation managers, the point people who make it happen. In this case, special recognition goes to accreditation manager Captain Tim Simons for his outstanding work in preparing the agency. It is now my distinct honor and pleasure to present Chief Matt Scales and the McMinnville Police Department with their reaccreditation award. Chief, if I can have you, please.
Well, Chief, congratulations to you and your whole department. It's a brilliant honor, so thank you so much for sharing this with us tonight. We really appreciate it. Thank you, Ed. Appreciate it. Okay, our next presentation is the Recology Rate Review, and we have Tanya Moffett here from Marina and Company, and she's going to go through the findings. So welcome, Tanya. It's nice to see you again.
City council members, it's a pleasure to be here tonight to present the agreed-upon procedures report that we completed on behalf of the city of McMinnville for the solid waste franchise operations of Recology Western Oregon Willamette. We went through and did some specific procedures that the city asked us to do to evaluate the hauler, to determine whether or not, we looked at three years. We looked at the year ended December 31st, 2016, 2017, and 2018. So we looked at three years. We compared all three years to ensure that the information was reported consistently on all three years. We also compared this information back to the source documents that the hauler provided to the city of McMinnville to ensure that that information agreed to those source documents. Our findings were that that information did agree, and we had access to the information that we requested. That's basically the report. Does anybody have any specific questions on it? We had went through some of the specific information in executive session, so.
So generally speaking, your, your findings are that it supports the rate increase, correct? Am I interpreting that correctly?
Our findings support the information that Recology-
Is presented fairly.
-provided to the city. We're not speaking on behalf of how much a rate increase-
Yeah, forgive me, I overstepped there. Okay. Any questions at all from the council? Wendy?
I just had one question, follow-up question to the feedback we have gotten from citizens. What portion of, is there a portion of the information that you gave us that can be provided to the citizens through, I know that we got information that some of it can't be disclosed. Is there any portion that we can?
Unfortunately, I'm not sure what is confidential and what is not confidential, so what I can tell you is that the information agrees to the information that was provided to the city. It's consistently reported over that three-year period, and that we had access to anything that we asked for and specifically looked at on behalf of the city.
Okay.
And provided the specific records and information back to city council.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Zach?
What was the timeline from when we requested the ability to audit and notify Recology to your audit? If I can ask?
I think that we, I think that we contracted with the city in March of 2019, and then we completed the report on May 21st, but we, we did the actual site visit sometime before that, in between there.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
Okay, Tanya, thank you so much for being here tonight. Really appreciate your report.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Okay, we are at the point where we're going to do reports from councilors on committee and board assignments. So I'm going to start down here with Zach.
Thank you. Council report for my committee assignments, historic landmark. We met and had a couple of things to cover. One was some design decision feedback. The Historic Landmark Committee approved a new development over by the Restore contingent on some design elements that they were, then were brought back to the committee to which they offer, they did not satisfy their criteria, and so they offered suggestions and sent that back to the applicant to hopefully, hopefully be provided with something that meets the historic landmark criteria of the construction of that development. There was some discussion on a follow-up enforcement action for something that was appealed to the Historic Landmarks Committee and to the Planning Commission that doesn't seem to have been done, so there's going to be some enforcement action looked into there. And then design decision, oh, a meeting location change, so the Historic Landmark Committee or Commission will now begin to meet here in council chambers, allowing them a little more gravitas in their decisions that they're making. Landscape Review Committee was, the monthly meeting this month, this month was moved to the end of the month. Last meeting we had, which I don't think I reported out on, was fairly mundane. A couple of items, such as the onset of a lot of the birch trees dying in neighborhoods. One neighborhood just went out and cut them all down and was a little bit of a scary scenario. So we talked about how we can get ahead of it on the other neighborhoods that planted a whole bunch of now-dying birch trees. And then we learned about the action on the Taylor Dale building where they cut down one too many trees, where I think we're, last we heard we were awaiting their response, so I don't know if they've responded to that or not. McMinnville Community Media is doing great. Hi. And then the last, but not least, not my, my committee assignment, but something I really am excited to see happen, is Parks and Recreation Survey is out until June 21st. We've been getting great responses so far, but we could only use more people saying they want a music amphitheater out there. And you can fill it out online until June 21st, and there's info in the back, little stickers that show you the cumbersome but delightful website you can take the survey at. That's my response.
Thank you, Zach. Appreciate it. You're a busy guy. Remy, another busy lady.
Thank you. So I'm here to report on the Affordable Housing Task Force and the Housing for Homeless Subcommittee. We're having a, we're having a slightly different report from our committees tonight. Instead of, again, reporting on some of the projects we're doing, we're going to take the opportunity to report on some things that we're not doing that have been miscommunicated quite broadly via social media and through some other mediums. So one is that neither of these committees are proposing a large homeless camp anywhere in the city. We have not proposed a low-barrier shelter either, and in fact, the installment of any sort of large homeless camp has never been discussed in these committees as an, an option for the city of McMinnville. Some of the other things that have been talked about in regards to this non-existent large homeless camp is that the city is acknowledging that there will be drug use and that will be permitted drug use, and as we are not recommending a large homeless camp, we are also not recommending or acknowledging permitting drug use in this non-existent camp. We are not purchasing RVs for homeless people to move to McMinnville. Not myself, nor anybody on our committees is currently engaged in that activity, nor do I believe any member of this council is. We are not working against the police department. In fact, we are working with the police department, with the police department serving on these committees as well. And we are seeking revenue, but it is not our committees, either of these committees that I serve on, that has initiated the wastewater tax that we'll be discussing later on this evening. And then I'm just going to take this opportunity to also say that personally, I would like to acknowledge that this is my committee assignment. These are my committee assignments, and it is my job to report on the programming that we're developing. I do support the programming that we're bringing to the council and to the community. Specifically, the Safe Overnight Parking Program is an opportunity to increase access to local shelter. I support this not only in policy, but indeed, my family is also engaged as a host site in this program. So as I've been reporting on these things, I, I just would like to acknowledge that I am taking the responsibility of my office and fulfilling my committee assignments to the best of my ability. I did not run for city council to be a homeless advocate. In fact, I ran for city council because I thought that our airport needed to be better utilized, and I could easily have been assigned to the airport committee, but I was assigned to housing and homelessness, and it's a responsibility I take seriously. I've learned a lot about, and I'm very proud of the work we're doing. And I timed myself, so that's my three minutes.
It's a hard act to follow, Wendy, but go for it.
I'm not even going to try. That's good. I just will take, I'll time myself, too. I'll just take a minute to acknowledge that, that what Remy just said, she has a really difficult job. She's put in more hours than many of us have because she's been given this really important task to lead up these committees. She takes a lot of fire because it's, people are so passionate about it, and she's, I just think you're doing an amazing job. We're all in support of the work that's being done there. So I think it's important to acknowledge that she's a citizen that's volunteering her time and way more time than, than she probably thought she would be when she ran for this position, and she does not complain about it. So thank you for all your work. Now for MURAC, we did just have a meeting on that. It was a great meeting. We actually got the report from the ESA students that were doing the sensors, which was, just for everybody to refresh your memory, a team of ESA seniors, I think they're all seniors, did as their project, they built sensors for us for the parking garage, so we have real-time, real-time data about the use of the parking garages. They finished their project. It's pretty amazing. They're going to have it all wrapped up and have a prototype so that we can create more if we need to, and so it's a really cool project and a cool collaboration. The other, some of the other things we talked about, we did talk about the, the Spanish market, Hidalgo, I think it's called. Open the agenda. The Hidalgo market update, they are planning on submitting an application to us for, either for the infrastructure loan or for the facade project. We got a, it was just a preliminary overview of that project, which looks like a really interesting project. There, we'll get more when we actually get the application, but it was just an overview of what they're planning on doing, and they're planning on extending in an L shape and adding office space and a bar restaurant that you can actually sit and eat in there, and also continuing the services that they're currently providing. The Third Streetscape Project, we just got a quick update on that. There's not a ton of movement on that yet, but we did talk a little bit about, the Granary District has a group of local landowners down there that are getting together to proactively talk about how they can, building on what we already have, how they can envision that area and contribute to the positive growth in that area, which we talked about a little bit, and we think that that's a great discussion and energy that's happening over there. We had an update on homeless camping in relation to MURAC, just an update of what's already happening, which we've already been updated on. And that was, that was it. That covered, oh, the last thing was, we had a meeting about the project that we're doing to, to encourage, encourage the building of homes in, within the urban core. We're starting on that project, and we just had an update on that.
Fabulous. Thank you. We weren't counting. All right, Adam, what's happening?
We have a YCOM meeting this Thursday. That'll be our meeting that we adopt our budget at, and it should be a pretty packed meeting, so if you've never been to a YCOM meeting, this would be one to attend. Airport Commission, we're in final stages, as you guys are aware, with the Oregon International Air Show proposed the 20th through the 22nd, and they're doing a public outreach with some hangar tenants next week, the 17th and 19th, and the pilots lounge, so if you know any pilots out there, maybe make sure they're aware of that, 5:30 PM. And outside of that, I'm excited to get our last KOB meeting once Susan and Mary Alice and the school board, our school staff wrap all that back around and hopefully bring something amazing back with fellow counselor Gary.
Sal?
Thanks. So just my one committee assignment, Mid Valley Council of Governments, hasn't had a, a meeting since our, our last council meeting, but we did have an executive committee meeting. The, the main business at the next COG is going to be the proposed new continuum of care, and the main interesting piece of news that we had from the executive committee meeting was that Yamhill County may be reconsidering its decision not to join the tri-county continuum, so.
That's fabulous.
I thought that was great news, yeah. I want to take a moment to acknowledge James Vandermead of Coastal Springs Water. James is kind of an unsung hero in our community. He provides free water for the high school events and a lot of the runs around town. I don't think he's ever really been recognized for doing that. He's never really sought out recognition for it, so I just wanted to take a moment to thank him and Coastal Springs for all they do in that community.
Thank you, Sal. Appreciate it. My report out is a few things. I've been involved in the Buildable Lands and Housing Needs Analysis, and we are looking at our final meeting this week. I think it's on Thursday. We are reading the draft document this week and kind of determining, you know, if, final approval on that, so it's an exciting portion of it, that the people in that committee are now hopefully going to go on and participate in the urbanization portion of the meeting, which is going to continue afterward, is my understanding. We also have a Three Mile Lane meeting this week, and at least for myself, that's just starting. I'm really interested to see how that works out, but it should be fascinating to see what we can do with that. On the Visit McMinnville front, we don't actually, I've, I've been in several executive meetings in the last week or so, and I do have a little bit of information. One of the things we were discussing was of significance is a new tourism-related businesses since 2015 that probably have profited because, or have started because of the Visit McMinnville destination marketing. So I just wanted to mention them, Atticus Hotel, Mac Market, Pizza Capo, Many Hands Trading Company, Allegory Brewery, Douglas on Third, Harper Bold, Suzor, Mac Daddy Donuts, Tour Divine Helicopter, McMinnville Center for the Arts, Ten Oaks Gallery, Zach Hickson Studio, The Bindery, Red Hills Kitchen, McMinnville Mead Hall, R&amp;R Culinaire, Britton Vineyards and Winery, and Ritor Winery. So, you know, our tourism dollars are working, and it's exciting to see new businesses in town. All right, so end of council reports, and now for the department heads, and we'll just go with you, Matt.
Yeah, real quickly, something may have noticed, the park ranger program's up and running. We've got six rangers downtown ambassadors that have already begun. They're doing really good work. I think Susan's been at every Wednesday meeting, and we're getting good feedback from the, from the people that are tasked with patrolling those areas. Excited to see the parks be a place that everybody wants to enjoy. And really, the big news that we've got out of MACPD is after our 28th council meeting, we had mentioned that we'd stand up a, a website with information about the newly adopted camping ordinance with respect to prohibited camping. If you go to our, the city website, Scott Burke's staff and a multitude of departments have collaborated to ensure that accurate information's out there right now. We've got a page that essentially get the facts about the camping ordinance. It's got the ordinance itself, it's got the map of the urban renewal area, it's got all the parks where you can and can't do. And in addition, it's got private partners that we're working with. I will say that we've continued to work with Champion Team, YCAP. Officer Height will be out the next couple of weeks, doing nothing but noticing, providing information, working with Champion Team, YCAP, and our other partners, and the county. I did meet with Council Commissioner Kula today about what we're doing, so I hope you'll find that one. So I hope you'll find that one, that that site is informative and provides all the, the information necessary. And I'd like to, I do want to say that the police department does appreciate all councillor Drapkin's support, and I wanted to publicly acknowledge that, that you have been nothing but a fantastic partner for the PD and our staff and the city. So thank you very much.
Uh, Susan.
Just building on what councillor Gary said, we're in the final push of our survey, and we're gathering everybody's input and thoughts to chart a path for the vision for recycling and facilities for future generations. So if you haven't gone to www.wattdoyouthinkmac.org, please go there. We've had a great response, and the survey is available in both English and Spanish on that webpage. We will be reporting back to the council on July 17th with the results of the public involvement piece and talk about next steps, so looking forward to that.
Yeah, we're looking forward to that. Thank you, Susan. Marcia. Okay, and then Heather.
So just to follow up on councillor president Minky's comments about the Buildable Lands Inventory and Housing Needs Analysis. We are in the final stages of our draft that we want to get out into a public process. We are looking to have a public open house on that sometime in July. So we'll publish it in the paper when, when we're going to do that, so we can get the information out to everyone. Our Three Mile Lane area plan, we will be having a public open house for that project as well. That's looking at the next 20 years of future land use along Highway 18 from the Yamhill River Bridge to the edge of town by the airport. Our public open house will be June 26th from 5 to 7 at Shemeketa College for that one.
Kylie.
Just a couple of things. So to follow up on my presentation from last week about classification and compensation, we're selecting our vendor for that, and should have an update for you shortly. We're also hoping to have an update on the division chief, training officer recruitment in the fire department. That process concluded about an hour ago. So hopefully we will have an update for you at our next council meeting. I also wanted to inform you that we have an intern through MEDP's Summer Internship Program. Her name's Megan. She's going to be at City Hall through the early part of August, working on projects related to local government, communications, and human resources. She is a double major in psychology and public policy at Western Oregon University. So if you see her around, please say hi. She's very sweet.
Mike. Nothing, okay. Melissa, no. All right, David.
So I, I believe that councillors got notice of this, but we recently hired on a new city prosecution team for our municipal court. We had our deputy city attorney Natalie Levine, who left us to take a job with the Department of Justice up in Portland, and we were very happy to be able to retain two experienced attorneys, actually a husband and wife team, that will be taking over city prosecution duties for us in our municipal court. We have Shannon Lee Erskine is the lead attorney. She had experience clerking in the courthouse for Multnomah County Circuit Court, as well as five years' experience in the Multnomah County DA's office. So she's got a lot of good prosecution experience for us. And then her husband Sam also had experience clerking with the judges in Multnomah County, and he provides contract prosecution work for the city of St. Helens. And this is a kind of a boutique business that they're putting together, reaching out to smaller cities that have municipal courts in, in doing their prosecution. For anyone who is curious about what we do on one of the other front lines of public safety in the city and the municipal court, we hold court here in this very room every Wednesday. Tomorrow morning, we will have misdemeanor arraignment starting at 9:30. It's always a good time for folks, other than those being arraigned for crimes that range anywhere from driving under the influence of intoxicants. And it looks like we have, you've been busy, Matt. We have several, over half dozen folks that are being arraigned for DUI, but we also have several folks being arraigned for offensive littering, which is one of the ways that the police department is working to address the behaviors associated with homelessness out in the community, public elimination, drinking in public. Those folks, if you want to see what happens once they get arrested, come to municipal court. And they'll be here tomorrow morning, 9:30. Those that don't show up, get a warrant issued in their name, and the PD goes out and fines them again and makes sure that they stand here accountable for whatever crimes they're committing in the community. So just one of the many services that we provide through the city attorney's office. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Jeff.
Thank you, council president, members of the council. Quick add-on to David's municipal court report. Sometime in the next couple of months, we'll be scheduling a work session for the council to sit and have a conversation with Judge Kaufman about her view of the role of the court and future opportunities that she sees to improve the municipal court. She's been working closely with David and the rest of the court staff on some of those initiatives, and I think you'll be interested to hear what her hopes and aspirations are for the court. As you well know, you've had about six weeks of lengthy meetings and full agendas. I will forecast for you, you've got about another six weeks of heavy lifting. And in recognition of that, there will be no June work session next week. And that completes my report.
Well, enjoy next Wednesday, everyone. Okay. I would like to open a public hearing for the proposed fiscal year 2019-2020 budget. And I'd like, as approved by the budget committee, and I would like to ask Finance Director Marcia Bagary to come and present.
Thank you, councillor Minky and councillors. On May 15th of 2019, the city's budget committee approved the city of McMinnville budget for 2019-2020. ORS 294.453 requires that after the budget committee has approved the budget, the governing body must hold a budget hearing to take citizen testimony on the approved budget. Five to 30 days before the scheduled hearing, the ORS requires the city to publish a notice of the budget hearing and a financial summary. And the notice and the financial summary were published as required on May 28th, and it was also posted on the city website. So our recommendation tonight is that we hold the budget hearing as required by the ORS.
Okay. Public comment? Okay. Questions? Comments? Councillor Drapkin.
Pardon me if this is already in there, but I know, and really, I should, I should defer to councillor Garvin, because this is really, this is really.
Okay, well, if you raised your hand first, my apologies. I missed it. If you want to speak, councillor Garvin, please.
I'll follow up for me. I wasn't sure what you were going with, but I have an idea, but I wasn't sure what exactly.
So there's been some discussion about using the current 30% of TLT dollars that the city already receives and designating those dollars specifically for housing initiatives. And so that's the basis.
Yes.
So councillor president, members of the council, I've got a presentation to walk you through those options and alternatives tonight. I'm not clear whether you want me to do that to set up before you ask for public testimony for the public hearing. It might be useful for folks who are here to, for me to walk through that presentation for about 10 minutes or so. My recommendation would be to do that. Take any testimony you have, then close the public hearing, and then have some council discussion about any direction you'd like to give us about those revenues. Is that, is that comfortable for folks?
That sounds great.
Yes, that sounds great.
Can I add or ask an additional question in relation to that? I know that in the budget committee, there were three specific concerns that were addressed by the budget committee. In that presentation, are you going to address those? Do you remember the?
No. What the budget committee asked for was to bring forward a three-year plan to stabilize the reserves. That's, there's several months' worth of work and series of work sessions that we need to do to bring that information forward. So that policy direction's on the record. We're not starting that conversation tonight, although some of the actions that you take tonight may well inform that discussion as it plays out over the next couple of months.
Yeah, just for the council information, that's looking towards fall is when we're going to start having those discussions.
So I guess this might be a question for David then, to memorialize the concerns of the budget committee in this process, understanding that it's, some of the things they asked for are gonna be longer-term. Do we need to do something before we approve the budget to make sure?
I'd say that'd be appropriate for discussion during council deliberation to see what the consensus of the, of the council is and how they would want to document that if, if.
It would be appropriate to document it, if you feel like. Because the direction was already given by the budget committee.
Yeah, so it was reflected in the minutes. Yeah, it was an unanimous motion passed by the budget committee. That, that committee has policy authority to, to direct information to be presented. So I think that direction's already on the record. I don't know that the council needs to do anything more than that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, other comments? Adam, did you have further comments?
I'll hold my comments until after Jeff's presentation.
Me too.
Okay. Do we want to do that presentation?
Yes, that'd be great.
Okay.
So Melissa, if I could ask you to queue up the slideshow, and I'll do a brief introduction. I wanted to set the strategic plan context. Just a reminder, the council adopted a strategic plan earlier this year. We have seven strategic priorities. We'll just cycle through those fairly quickly. I'm not going to read them all to you. I do want to note that during the council and executive teams' team-building exercise earlier this year, there were a series of council priorities that were addressed. They include increasing workforce housing, addressing camping within the community's quality of life standards, and ensuring diverse and affordable housing options. In addition, the council also adopted a series of high priority council, council priority action items. They're identified in the adopted version of your strategic plan. I think each of these, the strategic participation in local and regional partnerships, rightsizing services, and identifying a housing strategy subject to renewal every 10 years, all support the initiative that's before you tonight for consideration. Just a reminder, on May 28th, the council enacted a franchise fee on municipal wastewater services with the intent to provide stimulus funds to assist in supportive projects and services for people without homes, including potential mitigation of near-term symptoms related to negative conduct. What we have done is to identify a couple of revenue sources. The franchise fee is adopted and approved. We anticipate that fee will generate about $500,000 of new revenue to the general fund. There was also discussion at both the council meeting and, I'm sorry, at both at the budget committee and subsequent council meetings about the potential connection between the transient lodging tax and the ability to support affordable housing initiatives. The city doesn't currently allocate the transient lodging tax to specific services. It's allocated across general fund services. We'll talk about that in a little bit more detail in a couple of minutes. There are other revenue sources that the council and various committees have talked about in different forums. Those potential items aren't part of the topic of conversation tonight, nor necessarily for a specific direction. Thanks, Melissa. Next slide. Currently, the transient lodging tax, again, is a discretionary general fund revenue. It's not dedicated to any specific services. So I think the, sort of the most instructive way to describe how we utilize transient lodging taxes is to just show them, show those revenues as a percentage of the general fund. So police, fire, and parks and recreation are the largest consumers of general fund resources, and, and applying that math to the transient lodging tax, you see the amount of transient lodging tax and the percentage of that tax that would be allocated to those three departments. The balance of general fund departments consume about 131,000, about 35% of the transient lodging tax. Next slide, Melissa. In terms of opportunities for expense for the revenue source, either through dedication of transient lodging tax or application of the franchise fee or some combination, the council has asked the Affordable Housing Task Force to weigh in. The task force, and I'll defer to councillor Drapkin and councillor president Minky for additional information as, as you'd like to present. The, the task force has recommended establishing a fund to support several initiatives that you see listed here. For the record, we're talking about land banking, leveraging gap financing for affordable housing projects, an annual competitive process for affordable housing development, funding a regional coordinator, and supporting private development of affordable housing. I guess the, the analogy that I would describe to you for an approach like this would be to think about how the city utilizes urban renewal. Urban renewal is a dedicated revenue stream. It is a long-term plan. There are dozens of initiatives and projects that are identified for completion in the course of the life of the urban renewal district. No particular order or priority is identified for those projects. In fact, they're often dealt with as opportunities and revenues become available. It would seem to me that the kind of approach that the Housing Task Force, the Affordable Housing Task Force identified is sort of analogous to urban renewal. We identify a series of needs. We start to identify revenue options to support those needs, and as particular projects or initiatives are ripe for implementation and the city can play a role in that, then we consider how we can support a variety of projects. So that's the feedback you've gotten from the Affordable Housing Task Force. Before I move on, I guess I'll turn to councillor Drapkin or councillor president Minky to see if you'd like to expand or clarify anything that I've identified here.
Well, I'll just say very few things unless there's questions. One is that our job in Affordable Housing Task Force is to address housing at 0 to 120% of the median family income. So these revenues will not only be used in terms of creating more affordable housing for people at the very bottom of that spectrum, but the professions we know that are in about 120% of the median family income include nurses and, and teachers and a number of, of other professions. So, so this is a broad look at, at creating more housing in McMinnville. It's not specific to those earning 0%. And the other thing that I would say very quickly is that we have been working with the county and some other municipalities, and the city of Newburgh has approved funds for a regional homeless coordinator as well. It's a project that we've been working with the city of Newburgh as we face some similar problems. And we're also working with the housing authority on that. We have, currently have a grant into Meyer Memorial Trust to try to fund that position initially. And the housing authority would be able to also house that position, so it would not be a, it would not be an employee of the city of McMinnville, but we would be partnering to fund that position.
One thing that isn't entirely spelled out there is that it is nice, and perhaps this falls under leverage for gap financing for various projects, is a need for being able to help certain nonprofits if they are providing administrative services for us in the form of casework or something like that. So that would be one other thing to contemplate with this, unless you felt it came under another heading. Okay, or is that it?
We've got a couple more slides to walk through before you consider opening up for a public comment. In addition, the executive team has identified some additional potential cost items that are related primarily to public safety needs and the potential negative impacts for camping. The ordinance that the council adopted recently and the staff decision to designate portions of Marsh Lane and Dustin Court to assure emergency access could create the need to deal with either vehicle towing and storage, facilities costs such as restrooms, garbage enforcement and cleanup, the potential storage of abandoned belongings, and the possibility of funding legal defense in the event of some legal action based on some action that the city may take subsequent to the council's direction. Next slide, please. Let me also talk about some things that we, we feel obligated to share with you. The council and budget committee have had significant conversations about the historic and strategic, the historic and structural gap between the growth of our expenses and the growth of our revenues. Certainly, an option for additional revenues would be to support or expand existing general fund services to help stabilize general fund reserves and also address the capital improvement needs that are identified for our facilities. Let me just talk briefly about the context for those facilities needs. We don't have a slide for this, but there's a table in your packet. Just a reminder that for the facilities that are supported by general fund or support general fund activities, we have a 20-year unmet capital need for those dozen or so. general fund activities, we have a 20-year unmet capital need for those dozen or so facilities of just under $34 million. We've identified the immediate three-year, five-year, 10-year, and 20-year needs. Just by way of context, the additional $500,000 from the franchise fee would generate not quite one-third of the immediate needs, which are identified at $1.8 million and change. The other thing that I'd like to do is update for you the current perspective on the general fund reserve and what might happen to the general fund reserve in a variety of funding scenarios. Based on the 1920 budget that was approved by the Budget Committee, we're predicting a general, we were predicting a general fund reserve of 13.6% for next year. That budget was put to bed in mid to late March, is that right, Marcia? Over the course of the last couple of months, we have done a continued review of our revenues and expenses. We feel comfortable suggesting to you that the estimated ending fund balance for 2018 will be closer to 25% than the 21% that the Budget Committee saw, which would translate to a 1920 ending fund balance of about 16.7%. If you identify the entirety of the new $500,000 from wastewater franchise fees to support the general fund, ending fund reserve, that would bump that 1920 reserve to about 18.5%. It would translate to a 16.3% reserve the following year, 2021. If you were to identify some combination of the $500,000 and from the wastewater franchise fee and targeting additional expenditures of $377,000, which is the 30% of transient lodging tax. So let me say it a different way. If you were to target that 30%, the $377,000 to some affordable housing expenditure, utilize the franchise fee as a general fund revenue to supplant that revenue from the budgets that you saw on the earlier slide, and then dedicate the balance of that to the general fund reserve, the impact would be about a 16.9% general fund, ending fund balance in 1920, and about 13.4% in 2021. If you were to dedicate all $500,000 of that new revenue to additional revenue programs that we've identified here or that the council would like to consider would have a slight impact, we'd be looking at about a 16.4% general fund reserve in 1920 and about 12.5% in 2021. So with that context, I would certainly offer the council opportunity for any clarifying questions, but since we may have members of the public who are interested in testifying the budget, if there is discussion sort of beyond and above clarifying questions, I would encourage you to hold those questions until after you hold the public hearing.
One clarifier, will you repeat the statistics you gave if 100% of that wastewater fee went to the reserve, what the projections were?
Sure. So if we simply dedicate that $500,000 to the reserve, the 1920 ending fund balance would be forecast to be 18.5% of the general fund. It would decline slightly to 16.3% in 2021.
And I'm asking essentially the same question, but the next step. And so then if we backfill public safety and parks specifically from the wastewater, then it goes to 16.9 and 13.4 respectively?
Right, which is actually fairly close to what we predict right now for the general fund without any new revenues.
Okay, Remy, do you have anything else? Okay, Wendy, anybody? All right, so we're now going to open the public hearing for public comment. Does anyone wish to test? Oh, on the budget, yes. Does anyone care to come up and speak on the budget? Yes.
Welcome back to the area of all microphones for all of you. It's very pleasant in comparison to the last meeting. I did want to bring up the portion of these slides that mentioned the expenditure options. One of those would be a facility cost, i.e. restrooms or garbage. I did have a question on that of where that would be. What would the need be for restrooms and garbage with that new ordinance?
So what we're suggesting is that there may be impacts on a number of our facilities based on the, where camping is allowed and not allowed. We can't forecast exactly what those impacts might be, but if folks are using parks more often, if they're using park restrooms, if they're using downtown buildings, there could be additional impacts. We didn't identify specifically where those might be because we're not sure where the impacts would occur, but we're just forecasting that as a possible result.
So being that the camping is not allowed in the downtown core where most of the city buildings are located, why would that be a concern?
Just because camping's not allowed in the downtown core doesn't mean that people who are currently camping might not be in the downtown core, moving through downtown, utilizing public facilities in public spaces.
Interesting. Okay, thank you.
Could you give your name and address, please? I'm sorry, I didn't, I forgot to ask to begin with.
No problem. My name is Brad Bassett, and I live on Dustin Court.
Okay, thank you very much, Brad. Appreciate it. Anyone else who would like to come up and speak on the budget? One more time, anybody else who would like to come up and speak on the budget? Hearing no other comments, I'm going to close the public hearing and open up for comments for the council. Let's see, let's start down here with Adam.
Remy, you had mentioned, and it was in your slide, Jeff, about possibly collaborating on a homeless lead with Newburgh. Do you have any idea of the cost on that?
That's something that's been discussed in the Affordable Housing Task Force. I think either Remy or Heather is probably better able to answer that question than I.
Right now, what we've done is put together, outlined a position for a regional homeless coordinator. So it's really in development stage. The hope is that in the long term, the reduction in redundancy and the ability to map services, there will be actually a cost benefit in a way to the city, as we know that there is a lot of redundancy that happens, and we don't have anybody that's kind of, there's no one entity that is aware of not only everything that's going on, but how those services are being used. We haven't identified a specific pay scale for that position yet, but we do, as does the city of Newburgh, see that we need a person at the forefront that is responsible for collecting and disseminating the information.
Yeah, just as a further comment on, although this person would not necessarily be doing it, it would provide a basis of information for a communication phase to assist in affordable housing and other information that we might want to get out to the community.
Additional feedback I have in regards to the budget and the franchise fee is, I would definitely like to see money set aside to increase our reserves, since they've been declining since I've been on council and even before. In addition to that, you know, I would be open to, that's our goal is to increase reserves, but be mindful of the fact that with the new ordinance that's passed, we could have unforeseen expenses, and I would be open to spending some of that money on those unforeseen circumstances to get this ordinance off the ground and make sure that it's enforceable and it's doing what we want it to do. All in all, I would say option four that Jeff outlined is probably most aligns with what I was thinking. I personally would like to see a third of the general fund dollars that currently go into TLT, or the other way to look at it would be 10% of total gross TLT dollars go into affordable housing, backfill what's taken out of that with some of this wastewater franchise fee, and set the rest aside for reserves. So looking at the chart here, you know, we'd probably have around a 17.5% reserve at the end of 1920 physical year, and maybe around 15.5 speculatively at the end of 2021, which still isn't where I would like it to be, back up into the 20s, but it's definitely slowing down that rapidly depreciating reserve that we've been spinning down for a number of years.
So can I clarify, you're in favor of taking 10% of what normally comes in the 377,200 to use for homeless-type program? Is that what you're saying?
10% of, basically a third of what we currently allocate to the general fund.
From the TLT?
From the TLT, put into something for the Affordable Housing Task Force to leverage, whether that's collaborating with Newburgh on a homeless lead, if that's getting more developers for workforce housing for, you know, the upper level of that poverty scale. That's not a committee I sit on, and I appreciate everybody that does sit on that, so I don't want to dictate what that money goes towards. That's why we have committees, but I think that committee needs some money. We've seen what it's done with urban renewal, and I think it's time that we allow them to leverage all the connections they've made.
Can I add one data point? I just want you to know the city of Newburgh did, if my information is correct, but I believe the city of Newburgh did identify $140,000 just for the regional homeless coordinator, unrelated to any other housing initiatives that they have going on. I'm not saying that we would replicate what they're doing, but I just, just as a point of perspective.
Thank you.
Council President Minky, can I just say something, just by way of process, just as a reminder and information for the audience, the council won't be adopting the budget tonight. If you come to some clear consensus or refine a couple of the options that you talk about tonight with respect to these funds, we would bring together a specific proposal or set of proposals for you to consider when the budget is before you for adoption at your next council meeting. And so, for instance, we can put together a scenario that captures what Adam talked about and show you what the cost impact of that would be, and if there are some other scenarios that the council's interested in us bringing forward, then that's the kind of direction we're looking for tonight. Now, if you come together on a specific option that you feel really strongly about, we can just bring that one option forward in a couple of weeks, but if there are two or three different versions that you want us to talk about or bring forward as potential actions to amend the budget that's before you for adoption in two weeks, that's the, sort of, the process approach that we would expect to take tonight. Sorry that I didn't set that.
No, thank you. I appreciate that, Jeff. Sal?
So actually, before I go, Adam, can you just rearticulate what your, what your position is on this in terms of the chart that we're looking at here?
So on number four Jeff's outlined, or staff has outlined, what 30% or 30% take is? I would like a third of that to be allocated towards affordable housing just moving forward. So I personally feel that as tourism rises, Airbnbs come onboard, entry-level apartments get refurbished and become flats, all great things for tourism, but they harm housing. And so I think if we tie a direct line to as tourism increases, dollars for affordable housing will increase. As tourism decreases, if it ever decreases, those dollars will also decline.
And so out of this budget, it's about $125,000 expenditure for affordable housing, but not earmarked any specific thing? Okay.
And may I ask how you arrived at your 10%?
So I, the main thing is that I don't think that we should gut all the other departments' dollars that have relied on this, and so, and I also don't feel that, you know, coming out the gate at $500,000 for that, I think that's too strong, and I would like it to be a direct number tied to it. So how I got to 10% was just analyzing different charts that we've seen over the years, but I just think that that's the fairest approach for everything that the TLT does supply to the general fund and that has funded over the years. I don't want it to be, trade all this money for that money. I think that there should be, there is other impacts of tourism on our general fund and on our services that I don't feel all our general fund dollars from TLT should go strictly towards affordable housing. I mean, tourists and tourism have impacts on all the departments, as we've seen in that chart, and so I just think that we still need to allocate dollars to all those departments.
Just as a point of comment, because when we originally discussed the $500,000, there's the whole part about helping in housing, but there's also the issues of dealing with the homeless, and I would not want those dollars to be counted as part of that other, I mean, they'd have to be furnished out of some of the $500,000. It's like, yeah, okay, we agree on that.
Yeah, the 10% of the TLT is strictly for affordable housing. What's left over from that $500,000, if it doesn't get to build our reserves, would be allocated to, you know, the increased enforcement, the trash expense and all that, but the goal would be to increase reserves by the end of the year.
Okay. Sal, any other comments?
I'm actually interested in hearing Remy's perspective, because I'm still thinking through this, and I think she probably has the clearest articulation.
Well, if Wendy and Zach don't mind, we'll let Wendy, we can let Remy speak. Go for it, Remy.
Well, I don't know that I do have the clearest articulation of it, but I agree that the departments that are currently receiving dollars from the transient lodging tax dollars shouldn't be losing the access to those funds and shouldn't have to redo their budgets. We do see the, you know, the wastewater franchise fee exceeds transient lodging tax dollars, so we would be able to backfill those dollars still from general fund. They would all be going to the general fund. I mean, currently, TLT dollars go to general fund, and the wastewater franchise fees would be going to the general fund. I mean, of course, I would like us to have a real budget to work with in affordable housing. Ideas of doing things like land banking, we're not going to be able to do on a few thousand dollars. Like us to be able to step up to the plate and start making larger strides. So, you know, there is, I don't understate the need to also be growing the reserve, and I see the real problems facing us. I think that we're just in a very difficult place as a city. We don't have additional buildable lands. We don't have the ability to really be adding substantially to our tax base. We are in a very, very difficult time financially with a lot of different things that need addressing. So my perspective would be that we do continue to support public safety and parks with general fund dollars, and that we give the Affordable Housing Task Force a fighting chance to make a substantive difference by using those existing TLT dollars, which could have been earmarked for that use years ago.
Just out of curiosity, what do you have in mind as kind of a budget item? If we weren't getting too specific, just kind of what do you think is a reasonable amount?
Well, I mean, I would be a fool to say that I would ask for anything than all of the TLT dollars to come to Affordable Housing Task Force.
Okay. I get it, okay. Thank you, Remy. Zach?
I, at the last meeting in which we discussed the wastewater fee, I voted no on my stance that I thought that the wastewater fee should be allocated prior to passage, and I argued hard on the side of Councilor Garvin that I thought it should 100% go to reserve, and I still believe that. I still think that that's where that dollar should go. The numbers that Jeff outlined make me feel more comfortable. The numbers that Jeff outlined make me feel more comfortable in either the backfill scenario or the hundred percent wastewater to reserves scenario. In the discussion, so that's where I'm at on that, on the discussion of the reallocation of thirty percent of TLT out of, from general fund to specific causes. Since my six months on council, it's been a cakewalk. No, no big issues come up. Everything I've read, learned, and heard and felt has pointed me towards a, a housing-first option to try and address and help the problems that specifically are, are in, in the city of McMinnville, and I think we have a real chance to pass a budget that reflects our desire to do something about it. And I fully support the Affordable Housing Committee Task Force's list of actions, and I think, like I said, it's, it's time that we pass a budget that reflects, that unleashes them to do some, some real unleashed activities and build upon that. So kind of where I'm sitting is with that thirty percent of TLT dedicating half of that to the Affordable Housing Committee, so I guess somewhere close to in between Adam and Remy. And then I'm still interested in the discussion around a tourism-related facility, and I'd be interested in seeing the other half or, or so go to that. And in the debate, talking about how we backfill the services specifically to increase police and safety or other encumbrances based on our recent enactment of the ordinance, so.
Just as a clarification, Zach, I think the discussion of the building and stuff like that is for another night, that, that will have to do with.
Sure, I understand that figuring out what that is, but that's still where I'm very interested.
Yeah, no, and I, I understand, and thank you for the comment.
Can I ask a question about, so with regards to the five hundred thousand, what would happen with the five hundred thousand?
I, I still stand that a hundred percent of that goes to the reserves and build reserves.
So I, I like the idea, number four seems pretty balanced to me. I would like some of the TLT dollars to go to affordable housing. I think a third is a little bit low, that would be eaten up pretty quickly. It's hard for me to make a decision about how much would be reasonable without seeing kind of which projects will give us the most leverage. Ideally, I'd like for us to utilize those projects to then bring in other dollars. Like Heather does that a lot with regards to matching grants and things like that, so I don't know how much is that sweet spot. So I like the idea of taking some of that TLT dollars, a portion of it, significant enough to be able to leverage into some significant impact, and then backfilling whatever we take from other departments with the wastewater franchise and then the remainder to go there. It's hard for me to come up with a number. If it's the whole amount, then I would probably vote for that, but without seeing what we would, like what that sweet spot is. So I'd like more data maybe about what that sweet spot is according to what we're seeing, so that we can make an educated, you know, decision about how much of that thirty percent. But I do support backfilling what we take so that we can meet the other services and then the remainder going to the reserves. The other thing I'd just like to note is that I don't remember who it is that determines that seventeen percent, but with the new numbers and that, that number four, we are close to that seventeen percent, which is actually the recommended amount.
It's the Government Finance Officers Association best practice recommendation.
So I, I feel really comfortable with that number, that we're being responsible with those reserves with that, with that option, and also providing funds. So that's my, it's hard for me to throw out a number, but that's my bias.
Thank you, Wendy. So it's my turn, and having sat on affordable housing for four years now plus, I feel like we really need to do something about housing. And personally, what I would like to see, if you don't think it's too egregious, I'd like to see about two hundred and fifty thousand being allocated to affordable housing needs, one of them being for the coordinator, probably somewhere in the range of around seventy thousand dollars. I'd like to have some contingency funds that we can use to stimulate or help programs of nonprofits somewhere in the range of forty-eight to fifty thousand. And then the rest of it I would like to see go into land banking or for use, perhaps kind of a, a broad use of either stimulus or land banking type money, whatever we can leverage the best. But we definitely probably do need to buy some land at some point, and this would be a way to do it. Are there any further thoughts, suggestions, comments?
Yeah, I, I have a couple of thoughts. So my concern with regard to the strategic reserve has been consistently that when I look at the data, both for our city and statewide, I'm expecting a loss of service for basically every local government unit over the next fifteen years, in particular in that 2022 budget cycle. So I'm just really concerned about putting on the gas too much now, heading into that type of a climate. I do think that we need to put some significant dollars towards housing and homelessness, and I think that although, I don't know that it's been mentioned, it was in the, maybe Adam mentioned it, the need to put money towards increased enforcement. I think we've really underestimated the cost of what the, the enforcement of, is going to be, the towing and the cleanup and the maintenance of property. I think we don't have experience with that as a city, and my guess is that the cost is going to exceed what, what we've estimated. So, so I kind of come down in the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar range that you do, but I do think that that needs to be, some of that money needs to be split towards enforcement as well as some of the services. So I guess that's, that's where I'm at.
Yeah, but one good lawsuit could wipe out the whole fund. That's why I'd like to keep it separate. No, I, and I appreciate your, your thoughts on that, I do. The only other thing I would say is that, as I said earlier, in the fall, we're going to start talking about other revenue sources, and so I don't see this as the only, the only possibility this year. So, yes, Jeff?
So I think I have some direction on a couple of options to bring back to you based on the notes I took and the better notes that Melissa has taken. I, I, I do want to make sure that the council and others understand that the direction that we got from the Budget Committee to bring back a three-year plan to stabilize the reserves is still on our work plan. And how you decide to take action with these funds will help inform the picture that is painted during that discussion. So we're still going to be focused, a pretty significant amount of our staff effort and your policy guidance to, to come up with that three-year financial stability plan, and whatever actions you end up taking in two weeks with respect to the budget and these funds will sort of set the context for, for, for what those questions will be like and what those issues will be that you'll struggle with over the next few months or so.
The other comment I'd make is that I'm, I generally would be more favorable towards, you know, I, I have a real hard time with talking about these kinds of allocations in a general sense. Like if I know that we've got a position that's coming up, that's a really easy thing. Or if I know that we're doing this specific project and I know where the money's going, that becomes a much easier lift for me than, than kind of these more generic asks, even though I know that we need generically to, to move in this direction. So I just wanted to throw that out there as well.
Yeah, and as, as, maybe as a compromised thought is, maybe if we allocate two hundred and fifty thousand, maybe up to fifty thousand could go towards the support of legal and, and police. I'm sorry, I can't do that because we desperately need the housing dollars.
Well, then you've got your one vote, and I've got my one vote, and we have a difference in opinion.
Okay, well, let's, let's let the, let's let the staff come back to us and see what they could dream of that will make everybody happy, Adam.
Just to clarify for Zach, you said you want a hundred percent of the franchise fee to go to reserves, and then fifty percent of the current TLT general fund dollars to go to affordable housing. Of that fifteen percent you're taking away are fifty percent of what we're currently generating, the hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Do you anticipate to backfill that with anything, or those would just be budget cuts across the board for the departments?
I'd be open to the backfilling of that from the wastewater to back up my belief in the affordable housing work. And to align fractionally, as a, I see it as merely a fractional deviation from my statement that I'd like it all to go to the general fund, and more in line with, I'd like to dedicate those funds prior to passage, in large part to the general fund. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
Or does it answer your question?
Both.
Okay.
That's so good.
I, I guess I would just like to add that, you know, I, I would have a hard time moving off more than the fifteen percent that Zach proposed. That gives the hundred and eighty-eight thousand to the Affordable Housing Task Force, but with the notion that if a strong project came in front of us, I'm always open to hearing it. But that fifteen percent of total TLT dollars generated in the city gives the Affordable Housing Task Force a dependable budget that, that they can move forward with and know that's going to come year after year. And I, I think that's really what they need. They don't need five hundred thousand dollars or three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I mean, yes, they could use it, but I think if they have a dependable source of revenue that they know year after year, that's where I'm at as a councillor.
May I offer up one other alternative that could come back then, which is that if the, if the council were to decide on anything less than a hundred percent of the current reserves, if it was to be a percentage moving forward, that perhaps we could evaluate it in a way that it could be fifty percent of current TLT dollars, but any additional TLT dollars over the next, any additional TLT dollars could also come to affordable housing. So as we're able to design and, and more efficiently use those funds, that our budget will also be, will be increasing and.
Okay, good thoughts. Wendy?
So that's, one of the comments I had was that whatever comes back to us, my, I feel like the, in my view of what we're setting aside this money for, it's also handling the, the effects that we were talking about. And I hear some people saying, like, we're going to put aside all this money for affordable housing. I feel like we need to also address the effects of, in whatever we decide, there needs to be funds going to that, because I'm sure that has not been budgeted in our base budget. So whatever we come back with needs to also have funds dedicated to that. So that was just a comment that I would like.
That's a, that's a good thought. Yes?
So I, I think I have direction on three-ish versions that we'll bring back to you for review. Let me remind you that, you know, I used to say budgets were created on paper, we don't even do that anymore, they're digital. This is a one-year spending plan, and I think we pride ourselves in this organization in being flexible as needs change, not just from year to year, but during the course of a year, and any number of initiatives that have occurred in this community over a long period of time, when there's a need to deal with it, the city's often figured out how to do that. So, so whatever the council's decision is on these funds in two weeks, that's really your spending plan for the next year, and if something emerges as a high priority project or a significant need, we're going to come to you with some potential solutions for that. So it's not carved in stone, it's not a, an official, this is the only way we're going to spend it. We, we'd always strive to be flexible and responsive in the community, so we can definitely do that. Thank you for your guidance.
You're welcome. All right. Next public hearing is the proposed use of state budget sharing for the fiscal year 2019, 2020, as approved by the Budget Committee. And I believe I have a statement I'm supposed to read. Correct? Okay. State revenue sharing law, ORS 221.770 requires cities to annually pass an ordinance or resolution requesting state revenue sharing money. In order to receive state revenue sharing in 2019, 2020, a city must have levied property taxes in the preceding year and hold a budget hearing before the Budget Committee to discuss possible uses of the funds, and hold a hearing before the City Council on the proposed uses of the funds in relation to the entire budget. So I'm going to open the public hearing and ask Marcia Bagari to please present. The public hearing is open. Marcia?
I could have a lot to add to your statement regarding the requirements of the ORS. Regarding the requirements of the ORS, as you mentioned, we need to pass a resolution requesting this state revenue sharing money. We need to hold the public hearings. We did have a public hearing at the Budget Committee meeting, and then we need to certify to the state that the hearings were held, and we have done that and are having the second public hearing this evening. And we have a list, I believe, in your agenda that is the same as the list that was presented to the Budget Committee, which, again, hasn't changed. So that, and those are proposed uses, again, not something that is set in stone, they just are proposed uses for that state revenue sharing money. Revenue sharing money has no limitations as far as how we can spend it, it is discretionary money.
Thank you, Marcia. So is there anyone who wants to testify on the state revenue sharing allocations? And again, does anyone want to come up and testify on the state revenue sharing portion? All right, hearing then, I am going to close the public hearing, and comments from the If there are no comments, let's see, I think I need a motion here. Oh, not till later, okay, all right. Moving along, we have the renewal of the Downtown Economic Improvement District. So I'm going to open a public hearing and ask City Manager Towery to present, okay, and call for public testimony.
Thank you, Council President, members of the council, members of the audience. The city of McMinnville established an economic improvement district to support development and downtown promotion and activities some thirty years ago. The state law sets out a process by which an economic improvement district or an EID can be renewed over a period of time. That EID is currently scheduled to expire at the end of July this year. You have an issue before you that you initiated about a month ago that generated notices sent to all affected property owners. The staff recommendation is to hold the public hearing tonight, consider the testimony that you hear, and then if you are able to extend the EID to adopt the ordinance that is before you tonight.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. So the public hearing is open. Would anyone like to come up and testify? Jenny?
Oh, I'm sorry, Jenny, I need you to give your name and address for the record. I will do that. Jenny Berg. I live in McMinnville on Northeast Fifth Street, and I am the MDA, McMinnville Downtown Association Board President. And I'm speaking about the Downtown Economic Improvement District because that funding has been requested by the Downtown Association to continue for another three years to help support the work that we do in the downtown. So the DEID is a significant source of funding for the MDA, and we leverage that funding to create more funds through the farmers' market concerts on the plaza, the UFO Festival and other things. And then that funding, all, both from our events and from memberships and other things, goes to fund many of the things on Third Street in our downtown and expanding beyond Third Street as well. As I mentioned, the farmers' market concerts on the plaza, the Christmas lights, and we've done a number of these things in tandem with the city and other organizations. The Santa Parade and tree lighting, Safe and Sane Halloween, Spring Fling, gift card program, banners, partnership in the Park Rangers program, and this is, the DEID is something where that is sort of the, one of our foundational supports of funding that allows us to do all of this other work and create more revenue to do this work. to do this work. I'm limiting myself to three minutes. I'm assuming that's the deal here.
Might give you a little longer.
Well, I, there, we have, the Downtown Association Board has been in conversation with many of the property owners in the last couple of weeks. And that has been a really enlightening and useful, those conversations have been really very good for, I think, all parties involved. And we have renewed excitement and interest in engaging with those downtown property owners as well as our members and have a number of different things that we'll bring forth to our board meeting in the next couple of weeks to move forward with just making sure the property owners are, the larger property owners are well represented on our board. We do have, our bylaws state that we need three property owners, which we do have, but we're going to be looking specifically towards those large property owners to make sure that they have representation on our board. And then we will be reinstituting quarterly meetings that are just more casual and formal conversations where property owners, members and board members can have conversations about the direction of the downtown. So we're very excited about the, the future. We're, you know, we're excited about, we, I think everyone is well aware of, you know, the great things that have happened in McMinnville and the things that the Downtown Association, as well as other people have brought forth to help our downtown and make it the place that it currently is. As Zach mentioned about, you know, bringing, being on the City Council and how it's just been a breeze for the last six months. That's how I feel about the Downtown Association Board. Just, just been a breeze. We are, I think we're, we're going through changes here in McMinnville, and we all know that. And we want to make sure that the Downtown Association is able to continue to manage those changes and make the, continue to make the downtown a great place to visit and a great place to live and a great place for locals to spend their time. And I also want to thank all of the supporters in the audience. We have had a really wonderful upwelling of support from some of the founders of the DEID and the MDA, and that has been just an amazing thing. And of course, I've already bragged to you about the board and the staff of the MDA. And I know that we all feel like we're headed in a really good direction. Speaking of a good direction, I do want to say that I know that it's sometimes difficult after people have their, their, their piece here, and then they all, like, 30% or 75% of the audience gets up and leaves, like, oh, we've done our part. And I just want you to know that if we do that, it's because we're going to go out to support our local businesses, locally owned businesses in downtown McMinnville.
I'm so glad to hear that. Anyone else who would like to? Thank you very much, Jenny, I really appreciate it. Is there anyone else who would like to testify on the EID? One more time, is there anyone else who would like to speak on, in regard to the EID? Jeb? Jeb, I need you to give your name and address, please. You may approach, yeah. Okay.
Madam Chamber President and members of the council, my name is Jeb Ledeen. I'm a downtown property owner and business owner in the downtown. I wanted to add a little perspective to, to this request this year. I'm definitely not in opposition to this EID, but I sort of oppose a status quo treatment of this EID going forward. We've, there's a, there's a tendency to consider this just a pass through, it's a city pass through funds, and I really think it's time to look at it a little bit differently. From 1986, for about 25 years, there was a real highly focus on this EID. There was one clearly defined downtown neighborhood, downtown district. There was one economic development project. There was one MDA board that focused on all parts of it. More recently, the downtown management of an EID has gotten far more complex. There's many more players, there's overlapping economic development projects, there's complex new regulations on downtown properties, there's a much different mix of businesses. It's just a little bit different world down there, and the city is hugely involved in all of that. So when the city first started this process 33 years ago, they said, well, here's a Economic Improvement District that we need done in this community. And people embraced it in a very, you know, kind of a cohesive, tight group, was able to carry out many things with, in partnership with the city for many years. So I, I just wanted to, to provide the context of that map that I passed out. And that, as you can see, you've, over the last 25 years, surrounded this EID, which is shown there in red. It's essentially the same EID, a little bit smaller than the original, but you surrounded it with this expansive, drawn out urban renewal district at the request of the people that were supportive of the downtown. But it creates new bodies. You've got, you've got a much broader economic development process. You've got many more regulations. I just, I just sort of listed about a dozen things that have happened over the last 25 years, and all of those have had a huge impact on the complexity of an economic improvement process. Got an urban renewal body that yourself as the governing board and a citizen advisory committee, you've got new laws, new regulations, and it just, it raises some interesting questions to me. Certainly not questioning this EID renewal, but, you know, I, I have to ask if the, if the city has or should have a clear image of what its goal of this EID might be. And I wonder if the, if the MDA is adequately representing the property owners that are paying this EID. And meanwhile, other groups, as you heard earlier tonight, are forming around the Granary District, a business group there. And it's, it's, it's just more complex. It's a lot more difficult. It's a lot more difficult to figure out what exactly the MDA's role is in EID as relates to all these other overlapping economic development initiatives. So there's been some talk about facilitation. I don't know whether there's going to be some going forward on, actually trying to draw the, the players and the partners and the people together in a facilitated process. If so, I'd hope that the city would, would think about helping to finance some of that, perhaps through Urban Renewal, which is a huge partner, I believe, in the whole core area economic development project. But, you know, the bottom line, I think, is without a strong MDA and without some clear goals and missions of economic development in that broader area, I think we risk having the downtown that we know is so important to the community and to the culture go downhill. So I just, I urge the council to look at this on kind of a broader scale this year and think over the next three years how we can go another 33 years with this EID in the right way. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jeb. Some interesting thoughts. It has gotten much more complex, obviously.
Thank you.
Just for the council's information, there's a number of, I think there's several letters here in regard to the EID too, as part of the public testimony. All right. Is there, yeah, I'm going to, ah, I think we've got two more. Okay, gentlemen, come on up. I need your names and addresses, please. Not that I don't know you. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Dave Hogberg. I'm with the law firm of Hogberg &amp; Reuter, live here in the Yamhill County area and have the business here in McMinnville.
Your home address.
Members, yes.
Home address. Your home address.
And it is 13951 Northwest Willis Road.
Thank you very much.
And also Waldergall, 1325 Northeast 16th Street.
Thank you very much, Wal.
So, you know, we've already submitted a letter in support of this, which I believe you have in your packet, and set out a lot of reasons for that. I think that it's critically important, and we look at what we're going to do in the future, that we have an opportunity to say, what did we do in the past and what were the results that we achieved? And is it going and does it have the trajectory that we want to make for our community? Clearly, the MDA and a lot of the rest of you and the city and all of us have been involved in an incredible journey to get McMinnville where it is today and the downtown. And what we would ask all of you to say is continue this journey. We think the investment, the partnership is an incredibly unique one. When the businesses get together and they're willing to work with an entity and use the city to help facilitate that and come up with this results, this is an entity and a program that we ought to continue. Doesn't mean we can't look at it and refine it and make it even better, but it's really special and we want to, we want to thank the city for being the facilitator.
Thank you. Wal?
Councilman Menke, I want to say about four things. The first one is that as a property owner in the downtown investment district, co-owner of three properties, I know that I benefit from the EID and the funds that we pay for the purpose of having management of the downtown, because each of the individual businesses can't manage the downtown. They can, they have trouble managing themselves, but as a group, they can finance group management, and that has been a very key element for the last 33 years in the success of moving McMinnville, McMinnville's downtown forward. Second, on my way driving from 16th Street to, to 2nd Street tonight, I drove through an extremely busy, healthy and vibrant downtown. I think that is a testament to the success largely of the MDA, though that the MDA is not the only group or, or individuals or people that have made that happen. The city has been important to that, and other advisory groups have also contributed. But the MDA has been the backbone, the spine of the downtown movement, and this EID has been the backbone of the MDA. And I hope you will, that you will consider extending it for yet another three-year term as has happened 10 times before by many other councils who have seen the wisdom of doing that. Third, fourth, I guess I should say, the MDA is an investment not only in management, it's, it's an investment in vision. As Jeb indicated earlier, the downtown is a dynamic thing. It is not the original downtown that the original EID map shows. And over, over the next several years, I believe that with the advent of the Alpine or the Gateway or whatever we end up calling this new area of our downtown, that we may well see coming before you at your next EID renewal action. Three years from now, you may see a larger map, and it may be that there's a, a request for a larger group of businesses that want to benefit from the management of the MDA to be included. And so I don't see this as a static process at all. I know discussions have been occurring and will continue to incur in this direction. But I, what I hope is that the council will stick with it, give the MDA another lease on life, and let it continue the process of managing a very successful downtown. Thank you.
Thank you both very much. Really appreciate it. Anyone else who would like to speak? And one more time, would anyone else care to come up and speak on the EID? Hearing none? I'm sorry, what? Oh, Steve, come on up. Okay, Steve, I need your name and address.
My name is Steve Rupp. I live at 14921 Hidden Hills Road.
Thank you.
And it's, my comments will be very short. The Public Art Program in McMinnville was born through the MDA. Without the MDA, I would have never gotten involved. I mean, I kind of said, let's have some public art, and the MDA said, you're it, son. So things like that pop out of things like the MDA. And one thing in our society that we've poured in concrete, unfortunately, is if you aren't growing, you're dying. And so support this thing, keep it growing, make it better, and don't let it die.
Thank you, Steve. Jeff, come forward.
Hello, council. Jeff Knapp, Northeast Cowell Street, Executive Director for Visit McMinnville. And I'll make it short and sweet. I think the first and foremost Visit McMinnville would not be here today if it weren't for all of the hard work put into the MDA and that they continue to put in to this jewel that we have. It really is a crown jewel of our town and a destination of vibrant economy. And I think that you should consider, we've got, there's a lot of work to do. So their work will continue. I see it growing and hopefully just getting better. So I would encourage you to continue with the EID investment, and it takes management and staff, and those things take dollars. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Anyone else? And again, one more time, anyone else who would like to come up and speak about the EID? One more time. Going, going, gone. Okay. Our hearing is closed. Our next public hearing is regarding the Housing Rehabilitation Community Development Block Grant Application, and our Planning Director, Heather Richards, would please come forward and testify. And I'm opening the public hearing.
Good evening, Council President and councilors. I am pinch hitting tonight for Darcy Reynolds, so bear with me. But this is a collaborative application for a CDBG grant from the state of Oregon for $500,000, $500,000 to bring to the City of McMinnville to help with housing rehabilitation of our manufactured homes in this community. It is a partnership between the City of McMinnville and the Housing Authority. It is managed by the Housing Authority program. The resolution that you'll consider later tonight affirms the city's support of the application and then also appoints a project and environmental review certifying officer. We're recommending that that be myself, working with Darcy on this program. This program's been around since the 1980s in Yamhill County, and typically the Housing Authority will work with different communities in Yamhill County and sort of alternate between communities in terms of where the need is and bringing these grant dollars into those communities. It used to be a program where it was a loan program, but due to the, the way manufactured homes are constructed and the lack of loan, land ownership, it's very hard to guarantee a loan. And so they advocated and lobbied to change that, that part of the program in 2013 so it can be a grant program. And that allows a lot more manufactured homeowners to participate. The types of grants that are funded are for things to bring the manufactured homes up to code, to stabilize home conditions, to make them habitable, and also accessibility. We have about 177 applications on a waiting list. There's 126 of these families located in McMinnville. That's why they chose to do McMinnville in this round. And also, they've increased their request from a normal request of about $300,000 to $500,000 because of the need demonstrated here. We just finished doing our housing needs analysis for the City of McMinnville, and interestingly, we have over 1,100 manufactured homes here in the city. It's about 15% of our single-family dwelling unit stock, and it's about twice what you see in the community in the state of Oregon in terms of the number of, of single-family dwelling units that are in manufactured homes. It's a very important housing product for our community. It's an affordable housing product, and as our land supply becomes more and more constrained, it's a very vulnerable housing product. So if there's a way to bring more dollars to these products, to get them more refined, to invest in them so that people can hold on to them, that's something that we all want to see happen in this community so we're not displacing people. want to see happen in this community so we're not displacing people. I do need to read verbatim an exhibit that's part of the exhibit, part of the resolution. It is a requirement of the grant application, so please bear with me as I work through this. But the city of McMinnville is eligible to apply for a 2019 CDBG grant from the Oregon Business Development Department. CDBG funds come from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The grants can be used for public facilities and housing improvements for persons with low and moderate incomes. The purpose of this hearing is for the City Council of McMinnville to obtain citizen views and to respond to questions and comments about community development and housing needs, especially the needs of low and moderate income persons, as well as other needs in the community that might be assisted with CDBG funds and the proposed project. The project details are there are about $12 million in state CDBG funds that will be awarded to Oregon non-metropolitan cities and counties in 2019. So that's all those cities and counties that are not currently entitlement communities with CDBG funds. The maximum grant a city or county can receive is $2.5 million for infrastructure projects. The maximum amount a city can receive for housing rehabilitation projects is $500,000, and we are applying for the maximum amount. If the city of McMinnville is awarded a 2019 Housing Rehabilitation CDBG grant, it would make up to $500,000 available during fiscal years 2019 through 2021. So it's a two-year program. The range of activities that may be carried out with these funds includes, but is not limited to lead-in asbestos testing, treatment, and abatement, inspections, assessments, repairs, and replacements of private septic tanks, drain fields, water lines, sewer lines, and wells, improvements necessary to meet the needs of persons with disabilities or reasonable accommodation requests, improvements to upgrade substandard electrical plumbing, roofing, siding, insulation, windows, and doors, heating systems, hot water heaters, dry rot repairs, and weatherization. The purchase and installation of permanent fixtures such as light fixtures and built-in appliances, and then it also funds grant administration and management. It is estimated that the project would benefit at least 120 persons in the city of McMinnville, of whom 100% will be low or moderate income. The proposed activities of this project is not likely to result in the displacement of any persons or businesses. If displacement becomes necessary, alternatives will be examined to minimize the displacement and provide required reasonable benefits to those who are displaced. Any low and moderate income housing which is demolished or converted to another use will be replaced. So we urge you to, when the resolution comes up on your agenda, to pass the resolution so we can submit the application. We feel pretty confident in terms of being competitive for the funds for this, to bring to the city.
Thank you, Heather. Is there anyone in the group tonight that would like to come forward and testify on this CDBG block grant? CDBG grant application? Anyone here who would like to testify at this time on this? Somebody raise their hand. My glasses are killing me tonight. Wendy, please.
I just had a quick question for you, Heather. The, I know that the grant administration and management is part of the funding. How much will this add to workload for you? And are you feeling, I mean, comfortable with adding that workload?
Yeah, so there's a two-part answer to that question. The grant administration and management funds will not come to the city of McMinnville to support my role in this. It will go to the Housing Authority. They are the primary administrator and manager of this. I will work with Darcy on certifying the projects from our environmental review process and then approving them as well. I used to be a CDBG administrator in another community that was an entitlement community, so I feel fairly comfortable with that, and I don't think it's going to add a lot to the workload.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any other questions or concerns? Anyone who would like to speak? Going, going, we will close the hearing. We've been at it here for about two and a half, quarter hours. I'd like to call a brief recess for about five minutes, so we will. 9:21. We're going to call the meeting back to order? All right, thank you, everyone. Our next order of business is an ordinance. Just looking at this. All right, I need a first reading of, with a possible second reading of ordinance number So we will now consider the matter of this ordinance, 5071. Does any councillor object to having the ordinance read by title only? Saying no, will the city attorney please read the ordinance by title only?
This is first reading of ordinance number 5071, an ordinance extending the duration of the McMinnville Downtown Economic Improvement Assessment District.
Okay. Jeff, would you please present?
Thank you, Council President Menke. As presented initially during the public hearing, this is an opportunity for the council to consider ordinance 5071. The ordinance would extend the pre-existing McMinnville Downtown Economic Improvement District. You heard testimony in favor of that tonight during the public hearing. Staff recommends adopting the ordinance.
Okay. So, may I have a motion to pass ordinance number 5071 to a second reading?
So moved.
Oh, I guess I need to, all right, thank you. All right, so I'm going to ask for public, oh, first is council discussion, I'm sorry. It's very dark. Okay. So, starting down here with Adam, what are your feelings on this?
I would definitely like to see it extended another three years. I think in that three-year period, we should have a discussion sometime within there about what exactly the mission is for those EID dollars going forward and how the MDA can align with that. I appreciate all the work that they've done and that they continue to do, but I think after what will be 36 years, time has come to make sure that it's being used as effectively as it possibly can.
So?
Yeah, obviously, this is the engine that fuels the crown jewel of the city, so I'm clearly in support of continuing the EID. It sounds like the MDA might benefit from more engagement with their members going forward, and that might help clarify some of the mission and scope issues. But yeah, very excited about the work that's been done overall over the years and look forward to continuing that.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Down at the other end, Zach.
Yeah, I think it's no surprise that I'm a big fan and supporter of the Greatville Downtown Association, and I think there's been some great points here that have been brought up. And currently, I would be in support and favor of renewing the Economic Improvement District emphatically, and think that in light of what has been brought up, that I think focusing on and enriching the cultural, economic, and historical properties and character downtown is super important, especially in light of the, I guess, competing interests or competing areas of focus, or additional areas of focus, or additional interests downtown, all vying for importance and time and share, that the McMinnville Downtown Association be given this body's enthusiastic support to lead the charge in the future, to both oversee what the whole downtown grows from it to look like, and to maintain the core value and that core center of what the downtown, exciting, what the exciting downtown's going to look like in 20, 30, 40 years, and keep that how it is, and ensure that those buildings that we hear so often that people came downtown, loved it, fell in love, and stayed here, ensure that that stays. So, I'm in full-throated support of the EID renewal.
Thank you, Zach. Remy.
So, you know, in kind of recognizing the historical role first of the MDA, and I think I've heard our downtown district often referred to as McMinnville's living room, and it was the, I think it was the MDA that brought us to that place, and specifically the work of some individuals within the MDA in the past that have done a lot to create incredible relationships downtown. I think that, you know, some of what we kind of didn't talk about tonight were some of the feedback that not only the council but the MDA has gotten recently, and with that in mind, I think this is a great opportunity for the MDA to forge kind of new and perhaps more engaging relationships with downtown business owners and property owners, and as was testified to, to maybe refresh and more clearly define their mission statement as they continue to seek a sound leadership with a new manager. I'm also curious, as we go forward, about the relationships between the MDA, the chamber, and Visit McMinnville, and if there are, if there is any overlap in those missions, and if there, if there does exist some overlap, it would, I think, would behoove this council and the city to know how they are combining their efforts and resources. And so that would be feedback that in the long run I would be interested in hearing about, if that's happening. So, you know, I believe the MDA was crucial in creating the downtown that we have, and look forward to see, looking forward to see what's in the future.
Okay, thank you, Remy. Wendy.
Okay. So I'm in support of the Economic Improvement Assessment District. I also feel like the Downtown Association has been a critical part of making the downtown what it is today, and I would like to see that work continue. I do appreciate that there was discussion about talking, looking at what has changed involving property owners to reimagine what it looks like going forward. To talk a little bit about MURAC, which is my, our subcommittee that I'm assigned to, we have an MDA representative on the committee, and they are an integral part of the projects that we're doing in relation to downtown. So, they do really inform the work that's happening with regards to the MURAC team, particularly the Third Street project, which is infrastructure, a big infrastructure project that the urban renewal is looking at doing probably in the next couple of years, but it's in the planning process now. It's, the MDA is a critical part of showing us, within MURAC, we don't have that depth of knowledge of what the vision is for that Third Street and all of the local businesses that make it so special. And so I actually think that the connection we have with the Downtown Association has been so amazingly valuable for the work that we're doing with the Urban Renewal District. So I'm in strong support of continuing.
Excellent, thank you, Wendy. I too am in strong support of continuing this Economic Improvement District. I greatly appreciate all the positive testimony tonight and everyone who's come out and who support this, so thank you very much. Is there any further comments at this point in time from the council? Hearing none. I would like to ask for a motion to pass ordinance number 5071 to a second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Zach moved, and Adam seconded. Okay. All those in favor of this motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please indicate by saying nay. It passes unanimously, six to zero. So. Ordinance number 5071 passes on its first reading unanimously. I will now ask the city attorney to read the ordinance again by title only.
This is the second reading of ordinance number 5071, an ordinance extending the duration of the McMinnville Downtown Economic Improvement Assessment District.
Okay. Are we doing this now? Okay. So I need a motion now to adopt ordinance number 5071.
So moved.
Second.
Sal and Zach. Sal made the motion, Zach seconded it. Melissa, would you please record or call the, call the role of the council and by name, please? Calling me last.
Counselor Drapkin?
Aye.
Counselor Garvin?
Aye.
Counselor Gary?
Aye.
Counselor Peralta?
Aye.
Counselor Stossens?
Aye.
Council President Menke?
Aye. Oh, it would appear that it passed unanimously. So we now have another EID extension. Okay. All right, and we're moving on to resolutions. First, we want to consider resolution number 2019-36, a resolution to submit an application for the McMinnville 2019 Housing Rehabilitation Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, to the Oregon Business Development Department, OBDD, and appointing Planning Director Heather Richards as both the project and environmental review certifying officer. Director Richards? Do you have any further presentation for us?
No, no further comments.
Okay. Council discussion. Start with Wendy this time.
I'm in favor of it. I think that it's, as usual, Heather has done a great job of bringing us the information that we need to make the decision. I think there's a need in the community, and I appreciate that we're being, it's being recognized, and as long as there's no concern about workload, I think it would be a great thing to leverage and improve the citizens' experience that most need it, so.
Okay, thank you very much, Wendy. Counselor Drapkin?
I'm in full support. I think this helps us keep people in the houses they're already in.
Okay, Counselor Gary, thank you.
I love grants. Fully supportive.
Counselor Peralta?
Yeah, we have a lot of manufactured housing in my ward, and just walking through it, I see that a lot of it is in need of redevelopment, so I really appreciate, Heather, you're going out and finding this grant funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Sal. Counselor Garvin?
Yeah, I'm total support. Like Sal's ward, Ward 3 has a decent amount of manufactured housing as well, especially the 55 and older community out there off Riverside. And seeing a direct impact what one of these grants can do for a housing situation like that, in my younger years before council, I'm definitely in full support of us going out for this.
Okay, thank you. I too am in favor or support this measure, so I am asking for a motion now to approve resolution number 2019-36.
So moved.
Second.
That would be Remy and Sal seconded. All right. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The resolution passed unanimously. Okay, we are next going to consider resolution number 2019-37, a resolution approving a collection rate adjustment not to exceed 5% for Recology Inc. Attorney Koch, would you like to speak?
Oh, I can do this.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Council President Menke, members of the council. Late last calendar year, Recology came to the city requesting a 10% rate increase to accommodate for the additional costs associated with changes in the worldwide recycling market as well as increased costs of doing business. After public discussion and debate, the council asked, and Recology offered the opportunity to consider establishing a styrofoam recycling program. They came back at a subsequent council meeting with a proposal and a request for rate increase of 5.5%, which was granted. In addition, the council asked for a rate review to be conducted consistent with the standards set out in our franchise. The city contracted with Marina and Company, the city's auditor, to conduct that rate review between March and May of this year. During the course of an executive session, you were presented the details of that rate review. Some of the data included in that rate review and study are not subject to public disclosure as they are either trade secrets and/or business records. You received a summary report from the representative of Marina and Company during reports this evening. The resolution before you would identify a collection rate adjustment not to exceed 5% for Recology Inc. We recommend that the resolution be approved. I will note that Carl Peters from Recology is in the audience. I will note that Carl Peters from Recology is in the audience tonight, and I presume that Carl would be available to answer any questions that you have that the staff is not able to answer or would prefer to defer to Mr. Peters.
Okay, council discussion. Let's start with Zach. Do you have any questions or concerns regarding this?
Nothing to start with, still.
Okay, Remy. Wendy?
I'd like an update on what happens, what's happening with styrofoam, but I don't have anything other than what we already talked about. I was happy with the report that Marina and Associates performed for us. We didn't see any red flags. I do appreciate the cooperation with getting that information to us, and I do understand why we can't share that information, so.
Okay, thank you, Wendy. Sal?
Yeah, I was satisfied with the report from Marina Associations indicating the need for the increase, and I just want to say I think Recology has been an excellent partner for the city, and look forward to continuing to work with them in that relationship.
Adam?
Definitely appreciate everything Recology has done in regards to recycling and being a partner. I, like Wendy, would like an update on how the styrofoam's rolling out. The study showed that, you know, that the need is there from what Councilor Peralta's filled me in on, and I'd be in favor of the rate increase, but just, I guess the only thing that does concern me is the testimony we took from Mr. Davis about, you know, the lack of public transparency, and I understand proprietary information and all that, but I do kind of share his concerns about when there's a franchise that has monopoly on a service area, that if there could be a more transparent way to do that than us just being in executive session, I'd be in support of that moving forward.
Okay, thank you. I too support the motion. I appreciate your cooperation with Marina and Company. Thank you so much. If you could really briefly give us an update on styrofoam, we'd appreciate it.
Staff city council, thank you for the opportunity to be here. 2.83 tons year-to-date of styrofoam. That doesn't sound like a lot because it's not really a lot, but when you think about it from a volume standpoint, it's actually quite a lot. And I talked about it when I was here, that if we can haul 800 pounds in one trip, we're pretty happy. But that, I think the reason people are so passionate, I know why I'm so passionate about things like styrofoam recycling, is they take up so much space. If, you know, I was able to convince my lovely wife, whose birthday it is today, and she left, smartly so, and I was able to convince her to buy a TV, but if we had put the styrofoam into our container, it had no place for our trash for the rest of the week. I understand that passion. I understand why it's such a concern to the community. As somebody cares about our environment, I would rather see styrofoam go by the wayside and not see it produced anymore, see it go by the way of IKEA, who said, "We don't even want this in our products anymore." That's what I would like to see happen. But yeah, two, under three tons. And I think I told you when I sat in front of you at the time, I said, "If we have a successful program, we'll get 15 tons." And I don't even think we're going to hit 15 tons this year, but I also think it's a picture of less use, which is the better, the better story in this whole thing, that there's maybe not that much out there, because it's pretty easy for folks to bring it to us.
Okay, questions?
Is there any sort of calculation on, like, a ton equals so much cubic feet of styrofoam?
I wish I could give you a straight one at that. I would tell you that about 30 yards, let me change that, about 40 yards of styrofoam equals about 500 pounds on the high side. I mean, if you really think about it, that's really very little. And first, when we started, we were only probably getting about 350 pounds for almost 30, 40 yards, but the team started looking at it, said, "Well, that's an inefficient use of city resources," so they started just honestly breaking it as it came in, so they could densify it. I was just trying to make it that simple. But it is going to Tigerd, it is being remade into additional styrofoam.
I have some questions.
Good use of the material.
That's good.
First of all, I apologize for taking you away from your wife this evening on her birthday.
Oh, it's okay. We had a wonderful day. Thank you.
Well, and I apologize to your wife then.
Can I write that down?
Yes, absolutely. Is there a reason that the styrofoam is separated from the rest of the recycling, it's not in the main part of the recycling depot, that you have to go to the other area and see an attendant to do the recycling?
Just because it's that much more difficult to handle. It is so exceptional. I mean, if you think about it, we actually send a truck hauling two, two containers, a tandem trailer vehicle, and if it's packed right, it's hauling 900 pounds. So yeah, it's just because we want to make sure that it's managed right, that it's kept clean, that we don't run into a problem. We haul it to the facility. There really is no other reason. Some of it is just sheer logistics. Where do we have room to put, put things at? But we want to make sure that it meets the standards they have, which are actually pretty flexible, but we got to keep it clean.
Yeah. I was just wondering if that had any impact on the collection of it, just because it is separated so that people don't necessarily see it if they're just bringing in their, their mixed recycling. They have to make that kind of extra effort.
Yeah, you know, I think the minute we said we can recycle styrofoam, people thought that meant they could throw it into the curbside. We're like, "No, no, 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 no. Don't put it in there. It's, bring it in. It's a drop-off program." And maybe that, and is maybe a better direct answer to your question, it's a drop-off program, and we need to keep it separate from the curbside recycling material.
Yeah. No, 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 I understand that. I meant at the depot. I meant that it's in a different bay at the depot than the rest of the recycling, so people that are already bringing them in.
It just, it takes up so much space. That's really what it comes down to.
Then my other question is that, I know that Agilox and...
Agilox.
Agilox.
Agilox. So they're advertising that they will take any number six plastic, which would include like the, whatever you bought your starts in, right? If you put a garden in this year and you bought starts at a, that kind of crinkly plastic. And so they're advertising that they can take that along with styrofoam. So would there be any reason to not also start collecting any number six plastic with that styrofoam if they're putting it all in the same pot when it arrives to them?
I think the logistics of trying to figure out, and to have your staff figure out, which material actually is number six, which isn't number six, what isn't acceptable. It's about as confusing at times to those staff sitting there it is to folks that are trying to put it curbside. I do think that it's adding additional materials is something that we can figure out working with Agilox. My position is I would rather see us focus on reducing and eliminating that material, but I do, I do believe that is something we can try to figure out working with Agilox. We've had those conversations, and we just want to get this part down right first. Once we've got this down, let's look at trying to figure out what additional materials can we add to that.
Can I ask a non-styrofoam question, but a Recology question? So volunteered for several events, of which you've eagerly supported to a sponsored contribution, and I've seen your logo around on many events. Do you have a way to quantify your guys' contribution to McMinnville-centric events?
You know, when I came in front of council last year, I looked at that number, and I apologize, I don't have a monetary number to it. I just remember looking at it, and if memory serves me correct, last year we contributed, whether it was in kind, cash, or time, to over 125 organizations in the greater McMinnville area. And it's something that we're proud of. We don't come up in front of you too often to talk about it, because we don't do it for recognition. We do it because we recognize a strong community is good for McMinnville, which is, which is good for Recology. We recognize that. Yeah, I think at last count, it was about 125 different organizations in the greater Yamhill area.
Thank you.
Hey, are we good? Wendy?
I think I also need to have you tell Katrina that we're sorry we took you on her birthday. I didn't realize that's what you had to do tonight. But I did have a question for you about the education with all of the changes in recycling and this new styrofoam. What, I know that you hired a position, but what efforts have you made to, because I know it's confusing for people with all these changes, what kind of traction you've had and what efforts have you made to educate people?
So one of the things we talked about when we were here, and it'll go out in a mailer, and the first one we just did was at the coast, and we talked about our whatben.com. And I seem to remember having a conversation with a city council person telling me, "Shouldn't that be whichben.com?" And I think they were correct, but it's still a whatben.com initiative, and you'll start seeing it on the back of all of our trucks. I'm not looking at any certain city council person. You'll start seeing it on the back of our trucks, I see an insert go out in all of our bills as we try to get to drive people to that site to recognize that there's a right way to recycle. And yeah, we've actually been so fortunate in this community, I think with the banning, the bag ban, and I think if everybody heard that at a state level, they did a bag ban. And I think that's a great thing, and it's really contributed to a greater quality and a better quality of curbside recycling from the city of McMinnville. But yeah, you'll see more stuff starting to go out from Recology as we try to dial in, how do we get that message out?
Nice.
And work with our good friends at Zero Waste McMinnville, too. They're a great partner to help us get that message out.
Nice. Okay, thanks.
And to get to the schools, right, so our kids can tell us what we're doing wrong.
Oh, well.
Do that anyway.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right. Thank you so much, Carl. Appreciate it. All right, so I need a motion now to approve resolution number 2019-37. Do I have that motion?
Sure, so moved.
Sal?
Second.
Adam seconded. Thank you. So all those in favor of this motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any who are opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The resolution passes unanimously. Okay, we are now to consideration of resolution number 2019-38. Sorry if I'm fading in and out here. A resolution awarding a contract for the 2019 Slurry Seal Project for 2019-5. Director Viset, please, tell us all about this.
Mike is fine.
All right.
As usual, I've done a good job clearing the room, so. Thank you, Council President, member of the council. We refer you to the staff report that's in your packet that outlined the results of the bid opening and proposed contract award for this summer Slurry Seal Project. In your packet is the draft resolution, a project vicinity map, as well as a project informational notice that'll go out to the Alethia and Meadows neighborhoods, which we'll be working in this summer. Unless there are any questions, staff would recommend that you award the contract for the summer Slurry Seal Project to Pave Northwest Inc. in the amount of $116,495.22.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Any questions, council? Okay, being no questions that I can see, I need a motion, please.
So moved.
Adam moved, and Wendy seconded. Okay, got it. All those in favor of this motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please indicate by saying nay. The motion passes unanimously. We are now down to resolution number 2019-... Oh, no, I've got one more over here. My apologies. Consideration of resolution number 2019-39, a resolution accepting a transfer of jurisdiction of a portion of Old Sheridan Road with the city of McMinnville. Mike, once again, you're up.
Thank you, Council President, members of the council. Again, I'll refer you to the brief staff report that's in your packet, as well as the draft resolution and the corresponding Yamhill County Board Order related to this matter. The Old Sheridan Road Corridor Project is the last project that's contained in the 2014 voter-approved transportation bond. Similar to the Hill Road Corridor, it's under county jurisdiction, and we're asking for transfer of that jurisdiction to the city, much like we did with the Hill Road Corridor. That will allow us to design and upgrade the corridor to city standards, and will simplify our processes to acquire needed right-of-way and easements. The project is on track for planned construction next calendar year, and we expect to have our public outreach and open houses occur this summer, probably starting in July. So more information to come regarding the project, but this jurisdiction transfer keeps us on track to keep the project moving forward.
Okay, fantastic. Council, do you have questions, comments? None? Okay. Then I need a motion in regard to this. So moved.
Second.
Wendy moved, and Zach seconded. Okay, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, I think we've made it through all the resolutions, so we are now going to have a invitation for public comment. This will go no longer than half an hour. To any interested audience members, you are invited to provide comments. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person for a total of 30 minutes, max. Please complete a... I have two cards here, and I'm not entirely sure that one person is here. Speakers may not yield their time to others, and in order to encourage an environment of openness, courtesy, and respect for differing points of you, please refrain from behavior that is disruptive. Okay, so I have Dan Hilbert. Is Dan Hilbert here? Is Brad Bassett here? Is there anyone here who would like to give public testimony tonight? Hearing none, we are adjourned.